And I want to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, for roll call here, we have Bob Cooney here, we have Susan Garrett here, we have Mark Donovan here, myself here, and Danielle Joen is on Zoom. She's that little tiny, oh, there she is, she just waved. Okay. I wanted to make announcements of executive session. We had executive session on November 8th as well as December 7th where we discussed potential litigation, property acquisition, and personnel issues. We're going to move on to our regular business meeting, but before we start with the consent agenda, I'm going to rearrange things here a little bit. We go on to the last page under subdivision and land development. I'd like to do number one first. I understand our applicants are here, so I wanted to give you guys a chance to deal with this, and then you guys can skip out of here, so.
Just verify.
Okay, sure.
Just for a little background, this came up before. This is an application which will be explained. The board didn't know that much about it. I was directed to appear or give the applicant an opportunity to come to you, explain their application, so that you can decide whether or not the township should take a formal position. So that's why they're here, okay.
If I may, pictures are worth a thousand words. I'm Thomas McCabe. I'm an attorney with the law firm of O'Donnell Weis and Tey in Phoenixville. Rock five.
Thank you, sir.
I have a set, so.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Stephen Creed?
Medal.
Go ahead. That's a question.
Thank you.
I'm here with the Serratos, husband and wife, purchased this property. They have a zoning hearing application that is pending before the zoning hearing board. This property at 1420 State Road is previously an assisted living senior facility. Currently, right now, there is no use that's happening. I believe there were six or seven residents at the senior living facility. Among the various zoning proposed relief that is being sought is to convert the interior into apartments, into a multifamily dwelling. So this is somewhat consistent with the prior use in that there were, again, six or seven non-related individuals who were residing with their caregivers coming and were taking care of them at the property. What this would be doing is leaving the exterior the same as a historical building, not changing anything as far as elevation, but changing the interior so that there would be six units on the inside, one unit in an already existing detached garage that was already being used as an assisted living, living unit, if you will. So the variance relief, the various variance relief that is being sought is in terms of allowing this to be used for a multifamily dwelling unit, to allow the square footage required within the R2 district for seven units, maybe eight hundred square feet, to be less for, at least six out of the seven units. One of the units is above the 800 square foot, and that's the third floor, as well as relief for the amount of square footage on the property as a whole that is needed for seven residential units within a building. Under the R2 code, I believe, this is a point four, approximately point four acreage property. It, right now, is not connected to public water.
No.
It's not connected to public water, although there are plans to connect it to public water, which would decrease the square footage requirements from 30,000 to 20,000 square feet per unit, which would make it, I believe, 140,000 square feet. That would be nominally required under the ordinance. There would be, it's point four acres. They have not been able to purchase any properties around it to increase it. That would be one of the other variance reliefs requested. Parking, as it is, should be close to adequate, and there's going to be approximately 14 parking spaces that would be there with potential relief being sought if necessary. So with all of that, I know our applicants, they had hired an architect who prepared all of these plans. The architect's based out of Pittsburgh, so we did not have him drive here this evening, and a little closer in Phoenixville. So with that, the, you know, the relief is, I think, well within the grounds for their seeking, what they're looking to do, they're not looking to change the exterior. The amount of potential residents that would be there is within the limits of what was there previously in the assisted living facility. Now, understanding the fact that with the assisted living facility, there were caregivers that would come there as well that weren't necessarily living there, so there would be, there would be more people than the nominal units that were there. So, in some.
All right. Can I ask a few questions, try to flesh this out?
Absolutely.
It's, the property is 17,500 square feet, four tenths of an acre, and it looks like you need 30,000 square feet right now, subject to this water coming in.
Correct.
So it's a, it's a little bit small for, get right to it, for seven units. I mean, it's, the concern, I never speak for the board, but a concern might be that, you know, the township doesn't have any limit on the number of people who could live in each unit. And while it's likely that there will be single people, maybe couples, it's possible for each of these seven units to have husband, wife, and three kids, which would be 35 human beings in the building. I know I'm making the bad case, but I, but it's my job.
I'm sure.
And then you have 14 parking spaces for two per unit, so who knows? I mean, this is a very tight arrangement, and is there any way that, you know, we have looked at the plans, and they sort of make use of what was there, but can you cut the number down? Can you cut it in half? I mean, can you go to three or four without, you know, disrupting the architectural or the construction work that would have to be done inside? I mean, it's just, to simplify our concerns, it's just a lot of people potentially in this residential house.
Sure. And two answers to that, if I may, sir. One is, I would defer to the architect. I'm sure there's, in my experience with architects, engineers, there's always something that can be done with the plans, and I have to talk to the owners as well, both would be possible. Certainly, there seems to be room on the second floor with some, with the way the units are configured in the plans as they are, potentially joint units, which would limit also the variance relief that would be requested for square footage. Notwithstanding that, in addition, there's nothing that would stop the zoning hearing board, or this board in any recommendation that you were making, limiting, even though it's not under the ordinances, a conditional grant of an application that if this, if the variance relief was being sought, limiting the amount of people that would live there. I understand the township itself doesn't have an ordinance specifically delineating how many people can live within so many units, but there's nothing stopping either this board and its recommendation to the zoning hearing board, or the zoning hearing board itself, under its powers and authorities, from conditionally granting variance relief with other specific caveats that could be on, including limiting how many people could dwell in a particular unit.
So what you're saying is, if this goes to a zoning hearing, that your client might or would be willing to limit each of these seven units to one person and one car?
Potential, if that's something that would be the zoning hearing board, or depending on the unit size, again, the third floor is above 800 square feet, it might be unit by unit, depending on how, you know, detail we'd want to get down and drill out of the zoning.
Now, the present situation is a, is a company that was doing this, is that correct? Who owned the building, was using it for congregate care?
That is my understanding.
All right. And do you know how that approval was granted to them? Have you looked into that?
Not, I don't know. We were retained very recently.
Okay.
I apologize, I do not know. I know that there was a company that owned it, that it was senior living. I do not know how they got that.
We'd like to find out whether there's any, whether there were any conditions attached to any prior granting of zoning relief. We're looking into that now, but.
Yes. We might, and perhaps we'd obviously share that with the solicitor.
All right. Have you talked to any of the neighbors about whether they, what their thoughts are about this?
At the opportunity to speak to at least some of the neighbors here, explaining with pictures versus just through the application itself, they're here, I'm welcome to answer, as well as my client, any questions that they may have right now.
All right. Well, I mean, this is not the zoning case right now.
Yes.
I don't want to get too deeply into it. The only question before this board, first, any questions of, before I jump ahead?
I actually have a really quick question. You had said that, that right now it has well water?
Yes.
And public sewer or septic?
Public sewer.
Public sewer? So, and, but you want to get public water?
If it's not.
You had said something about limiting the size because you, because of the well?
Under the ordinances of the township, if, there's a different square footage requirement for the properties in the R2 district, depending on whether you are hooked up to both public sewer and water.
Right.
Or whether you're not.
Right.
So if they can hook up to, they're already hooked up to public sewer.
Right.
Property already is, as is, as we standard today.
Right.
The intention of the owners is to hook up to public water as well, which would lower the square footage requirement for what they are seeking to do.
See, right now, if you just have one of the two.
For the lot size, I'm sorry, lot size, not the square footage of the apartments themselves. For the lot, for the lot size itself, to have a multifamily dwelling.
Okay.
Sorry, but I was using the terminology, not, not clearly.
That's where I was confused.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'll take any help.
Okay, all right.
So yes, not, not, not unit size, lot size.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and even, just to clarify, that even with, even with public sewer and public water, you're almost a tenth of the lot size you would require to have a multifamily with seven units.
That.
That's how I'm reading it, right?
No, you are correct.
Okay, thanks, just for clarification.
The, the unit in the back, did that have a kitchen before? That was just a sleeping unit before, is that?
That is my understanding, it was like.
And do we know whether any of the persons who were receiving the congregate care had cars at the facility? I would presume not.
I don't believe they did. I think the only cars were the, were the aides that would be coming to assist, would take care of them.
I'm sorry, sir, could you step up to the microphone so we could get you on the video?
Yep.
That's okay.
I'm Edward Serrato, I'm the owner. So, five Campbell, I believe, and 1420, they used to share the same parking lot.
Okay.
They were the same owner.
Okay.
The owner.
So you're not taking possession of the property behind it?
No.
Just the front one, okay.
Correct.
Someone else beat him to the question.
Okay.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCabe, is there a, I see the parking lot goes right up to the property line, there's a fence. Is there a set off requirement that would require the parking to be set back from the rear property line or from the side yards, you know?
Not that I know of, but I'm happy to look into that, sir. There, well, if there is, obviously, the plans could be modified.
Okay.
I, I have one question.
For the, yeah, there's a question from your.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry, Danielle, I didn't hear you there.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question also on parking. My first question is, is the, is the parking lot footprint the same as it currently is? Or is it expanded?
It's expanding.
Okay. And then the, my second question is, looking at the configuration of the parking spaces here, it, it would assume to me, if you have two, you have a pretty full lot, I'm looking at this very last spot, and I was sent a picture, so I'm looking at it on my phone. It looks like if someone wanted to leave, they don't have a turning radius to allow them to back up in that, from that very last spot and, and head out of the lot forward. They would actually, they are actually forced to back up.
They'd have to back.
Can you clarify that, how that, it doesn't seem like there's enough room to turn around if you're in that last spot, if you have a full lot?
Are you talking about spot one, ma'am, or spot eight?
Let me see if I can, it looks like the spots, one, two, three, four, so say, for example, you're in lot, you're in spot one.
Spot one in the back corner.
Spot one in the back, top left corner, if you're looking at the property?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same spot.
Yeah. You don't own the, the piece of property to the, the left there, so if you have every other spot full, and that person is leaving to go to work in the morning, they are backing up through that lot, and backing up on the driveway to exit the property. Is that, I just want to understand that.
No.
So she's gone about coming out this way, going down.
No.
It would either have to be back in parking, which they would, which would then, which certainly happens, and you can have that as a signage there, that it would have to be, you know, back, back in parking, because then there wouldn't be any turnaround at that point in time.
There would be a.
Presuming you could back in, because there's no car parked in the, the spot in front of it.
Even if there was, I believe, with the, with the, with the square, with the distance, you could, but maybe not a giant F-150, but I would say most cars probably.
Paul, would you be able to?
I mean.
Answer that?
Yeah, I'm, the, the plan here isn't to scale, but I think the concern is that once the car is parked in there, if it's face first, when it tries to reverse and go out.
Okay.
It would go, you know, across the property line and potentially the fence, if the fence is going through it. And the same breath, when you're explaining how, like, it would have to be a backup into the spot, again, the car would be really pinned, especially if that parallel parking car, or the, it's number one, it's the other number one that's right near the, the tree there, that would really put a constraint on the vehicle's turning radius to do, to do so. It's almost as if that one spot, that's, that's parallel parking right there, would have to be eliminated, so that cars that would be parked would be able to reverse all the way back, to be able to make that turn.
Which may go to what Mr. Brennan was saying, if we have to reduce the, the number of units that there are, that would also potentially reduce the parking spots that would be required, which would alleviate both issues. Consider. Would that work, ma'am? If, if the units, if the amount of units, I'm, sorry, Ms. Creed.
Danielle.
Danielle, thank you, sorry, Danielle. If the amount of units, and again, would have to talk to the architect and the owners on this, but if the amount of units were reduced to some manner, which would then reduce the parking, the amount of parking required, that could alleviate the issue that you've raised in terms of parking radius.
Yeah, I, I just think that, that's a potential solution. It, I mean, to me personally, I know this is, you're saying this is not to scale. It, it doesn't seem as, the, the spot parallel to that next to it has enough room really to back out, and it's, it looks like a pretty complicated parking lot, is my non-expert opinion.
Understood, and I'm happy to, again, talk to the architect. I'm getting nods from the owner that that's a discussion he's more than willing to have with the architect, to alleviate any concerns of the board, both for parking and units.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you tell me how old the building is?
From 1926.
Has the historical commission weighed in on this yet? It hasn't been in front of them?
No.
Well, it wouldn't go in front of them unless, unless we trigger it, so.
If they don't change the outside, then it's not.
If they're only doing work on the inside, the historical commission wouldn't, wouldn't have had anything to do with this.
If the zoning is approved, we'll be going to those, to historical.
Okay.
Is there any requirement for that, that accessory building over there, the garage that's been converted to a sleeping unit, that would be converted into a full living space? Would that, would that have to go in for approval as an accessory dwelling unit? And what process do we use here for that? I don't know if, because, like, it's an accessory to the main structure, and it would be, but would it be, would multifamily housing apply to the whole lot, including the accessory structure?
It's a good question. Accessory structure, normally they're garages.
Right.
This is a dwelling unit, so.
A pre-existing dwelling unit.
True, without, without a kitchen.
Yes.
But, yeah, putting the kitchen in would create an accessory dwelling unit, and would that, would that necessitate an application?
These are interesting zoning issues, and we're getting a little deeper than we need to. The only question before you is, do you oppose it or not? So that's, so.
Are there individual ingress and egress per unit, or do they have one common door in and out?
So the first floor will have front door and back door. The two apartments in the first floor will have access to the front and back. The second floor will have access to the front and back also, there's a existing stair tower in the back of the exterior of the property. So the third floor will have their own exit.
Another stairway, outdoors stairway?
Yeah, it's already existing, so we will just fix it up, make it nice, and make it up to code, or whatever has to be done.
So, Bill, you mentioned, you know, maybe being more comfortable if it weren't as many units. I see a street map here, but I don't see all the neighboring houses listed in that map. You mentioned that, if the neighbors weighed in.
Well, the neighbors wouldn't get notice of this tonight. The neighbors get notice of the zoning hearing, which is on the 12th, I believe, so.
Seven days in advance, and seven days in advance for that.
Do we have an overview anywhere that shows all the neighboring houses, how close they are?
No.
No, we don't.
I think the, the historical Meadowbrook House is back there at the end. Is that at the end of Hollowell, or is that off of?
Campbell. It's off Campbell.
All the way at the end of Campbell.
Does the board have any other questions?
No, just that I like the idea of, I think we're trying to squeeze a lot in here, and I'd be concerned if I were a neighbor, and it went from a quiet senior care facility to suddenly being a high-density, potentially jam-packed scene with traffic issues and, you know, noise and all those sort of things.
Would the board, would, would your concerns be alleviated if, is it, is it the fact that it's just a multifamily residential unit, or just the amount of units that there are? So if the units were decreased, thus decreasing both the parking and the amount of people, would that, would that change your opinion of it?
Well, I'm trying to think, if I were a neighbor, and it had a similar amount of disturbance or, or activity, I'd feel more comfortable. So I haven't been up there to look at it, and this is the first, I've really started to dive into it, so I think I'd want to maybe take a look at it.
I'm not necessarily opposed to seeing multifamily housing, I'm just, the density of seven, seven units is a lot. For, for this, for this specific property, that would be a lot.
I drive past this building every day, several times a day. Seven units is a lot.
So it sounds like you're, you would want to and need to.
We'll have to make some changes.
And need to continue our zoning hearing board in order for the architect to revise the plans. But if the unit, the, the concept of, I want to, and I know the other board members are going away, but I have a feeling you're all going to probably be the same, if, the concept of a multi-family dwelling unit with less than seven units, and also decreased than parking, is that something the board would be opposed to?
If we see more of the units over that 800 square foot minimum, I would be more amenable to not opposing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, I think it's a matter of the neighbors weighing in more than us.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
But that if it were.
And that would happen before the zoning hearing board, so.
Right, if it were half that number, and they felt that it wasn't going to be as much.
Well, no, let me be clear about that. The, the zoning hearing board sends out notice to people within 500 feet. I have a list of those properties that would get the notice, but we're not going to know what they think or if they'll show up. We're not going to know that till the hearing.
But, I mean, generally speaking, if, if they're opposed, they'll show up.
Yeah, but some people are, some people are opposed, don't show up, and then complain later.
Well.
So if the applicant took our polls, and we said, hey, four units would probably be okay if it weren't a lot more disturbance and traffic, those neighbors might, might come in and, or they may not, but at least we could try to help shape it so it's more acceptable to them.
Well, we really can't shape it unless I'm at the table, because I'm not going to know what's happening.
Right.
And I have plenty of work, and I'm not asking for.
I'm going to give Bill as much work as the township is willing to pay for.
Yeah. So, I mean, you can, you're not, you're not allowed to go to the zoning hearing board and tell them what you think they should do. They're an independent body, and so that's, that's.
Right, no, no, I get that.
Can't do that.
I get that, I'm trying to.
We can support if those are just not show up at all, basically.
Correct.
Yeah, if we don't show up, then you let the zoning hearing board decide, based on their own judgment about what they want. Now, you've, you've given a signal as to what, you know, your thoughts are about it, but that's not binding on them, they can.
Correct.
But what we can say, as you were all discussing, and I'm happy to say this on the record and for the board and for everyone's benefit, my client is willing to go back to his architect to have the plans revised, to lower the amount, to decrease the amount of rental units that would be within the property itself, and thus also alleviate the amount of parking and variance requests that are going to be. With that, we would be contacting the zoning hearing board during business hours, early, the solicitor, at least as early as tomorrow, to request a continuance of the zoning hearing scheduled for Monday, because the architect's going to need some time to revise the plans and resubmit an amended application.
And we get another look at that before it goes in?
Absolutely.
I think that makes sense. So you'll call McKenna?
Yes, I'll give, I'll give Pat a call.
All right.
So you don't have to take any action tonight?
Yeah, no action required. Go ahead.
Yes.
Good, Danielle.
Well, is there some guidance that they could look into? I know, for example, on the corner of Whitehorse and East Philip, there's a twin, right? A historical twin about the same age of, of this house, which doesn't seem to cause any disturbance to the neighbors around it. I believe there are some other multifamilies maybe in the vicinity that could give an indication of what is maybe compatible with the neighborhood? I don't know if that's something that you could look at. I, Martha, I believe you're aware of another multifamily maybe in that, in that area?
Suzanne Rocky, you mentioned that there was a multi-unit. Do you remember, do you know which, which house it is on State Road?
It's across the street, and just maybe two doors further towards the high school on the other side of the road. It's a four-unit building. And I'm sorry, it is, I think they painted it, or stuff, so it's like a yellowing right now.
Yes.
But it has one unit, it has two units on the bottom, and three units on the top.
Yes, there's a four-unit house across the street from it.
Across the street, it's just up there.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
All right, so I guess we'll take no action, and we'll wait to confirm the, the continuance. If for some reason Mr. McKenna says no continuance, then we'll have to regroup, but he'll, he'll go along with it, I presume.
Should I tell him, you'll give him a call if that happens, Bill?
Right.
Thank you all very much, remember, we appreciate your input.
Thank you.
That's why we appreciate coming to these meetings, so that we're not wasting the zoning hearing board or anyone else's time. Thank you all very much. Happy holidays.
Great, thank you.
Is this part of this?
And I see we may be excused, is that?
No, sure.
Yes, yes, thank you.
This is the, the other company, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, I just thought it was all part of, part of that.
No, but.
Okay. Okay.
Back to consent.
Yes, yes. All right, let's get back to our regular business meeting and the consent agenda. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' November 2nd, 2022 Business Meeting. All departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of November 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's report and payment of bills for the period ending November 30th, 2022. Consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, comments? All right, so, as of November 30th, we have a general fund balance of just slightly over 4.9 million. It's a decrease over last month, which is not unexpected, based on the time of the year.[1739.88] We have realized 100% of our estimated revenue for 2022 and 77% of expenses, and we have a current excess of revenue over expenses in the amount of 1.7 million, but that will continue to decrease this month as we have a lot of large year-end expenses, but we will end the year with a surplus.
Okay, that's good to know. So there's, what about the bills anyway?
Bills have, yes, and the bills that we're going to pay have all been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Okay, great, thank you. So there's been a motion and a second. Any comment or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports. Mark, do you have anything?
Nothing exciting, no.
Okay. Susan, do you have anything? Bob, do you have anything?
All good.
Okay, Danielle, do you have anything? A two-minute report as a board liaison?
She's talking.
You're on mute.
Sorry, my mute button was sticky. Um, no, I have nothing to report, Martha.
Okay, great. Uh, I don't either. So, uh, Township Manager, Lori, do you have something?
Yes, just very briefly. The traffic impact study that we decided to pivot from the last meeting or two, McMahon has started, if you've seen them out around the township, they've started working on doing the additional traffic counts that will help us to work with them to develop.
Is that who that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're at, the traffic impact fee study is a lot more limited in scope with the traffic counts that it does, so they're expanding on that so that we can develop the scope of work to identify what, what we want to target for traffic improvements with the remainder of that budget. So they're working on that. Quick update on the website, the new township website that we're working on, we're still on, on target. It's going really great. The company has been really great to work with. So we are on target for a late January, early February launch, so in the next several weeks, we'll be able to maybe demonstrate where we're at in the process, but everything's going great with that, so we're, we're on track. Paul's going to cover Paul Lehman Drive, and I think that's it for me, other than agenda items.
Okay. Chief of Police. Okay, can you come to the microphone? I'm sorry.
I'm generally pretty loud enough at that point. You have a copy of the monthly report of incidents. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Can I ask you, could you speak to some of the numbers? So for example, traffic citations, that's like tickets and things like that.
In terms of?
Traffic citations.
Right, there was 28, I believe.
Yeah, so, so last year at this time, there were 117 tickets, and this year there have been 263 tickets. So more than doubled the number of tickets. Can you explain like why we're giving out more tickets?
There's been more traffic enforcement.
So, so we've doubled that, and so this month, last year, there were eight tickets given, and this month, this year, we've given out 26 tickets?
Correct.
And is there?
It's, one of the chief's priorities is to keep the roadways safe and reduce accidents, and that's one way we're doing it.
So we are giving out substantially more tickets these days?
We're also giving out probably on a percentage basis. It's probably 75 to 80% verbal warnings and 20% citations, maybe.
But, but definitely, I mean, more than double?
Yes. Been more traffic enforcement this year than last year.
Can you also talk to arrests? Because it also looks like this year, last year, this time last year, there were 20 arrests, and this year, there have been 48 arrests. Can you speak to why we're arresting people now?
Calls for service. It's not, it's not self-initiated, it's response to situations.
So can you speak to some of that?
We've had, we've had more incidents at the Technical College High School, and there's been arrests out of there. There's been a couple pretty serious juvenile-related incidents that come to us from the county district attorney referrals based on, well, what most people refer to as the legacy of Sandusky Incident. We're investigating more sexual assaults, we're investigating more physical assaults, so it's not that we're going out and seeking them, it's the fact that they're coming to us and we have to handle it.
And so are the six arrests this month, are they different than the juvenile referrals? Because we also have more juvenile referrals.
Yes, they are different, yes, correct. But some of the, like I said, with the school, some of them are 18, so that would turn into a regular arrest, not a referral.
And these are, you're saying these are all from the Technical College?
That's some of them, that's some of the increase.
Is there anything else accounting for the increase in arrests? Other than that?
I, I wish I knew. I, I mean, it's, it, we're just responding to incidents and handling them the same way we always did, but there's more incidents.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
One of the things I always look at is the, the number of deer related, or most of these auto accidents are sometimes just a call for a, I mean, I guess let me rephrase that. For a lot of these deer that are just on the road and you have to go out and clean them up, or is there sometimes an accident where they're?
We have to walk the road and call Pendott for pickup, yeah.
Have we seen any injuries to drivers in any of these?
No.
Or are they normally just?
Not, not that I'm aware of. It's fender, bender, minor, minor accidents.
Okay, I noticed it's doubled this month.
Right.
This year compared to last year. Yeah, mating season.
Time of the year, I should say.
Right. Yeah, I noticed in our neighborhood, they're a crazy amount this year. It fluctuates and flows, it may go down in a year or two, and.
Right. Depending on the population.
Right. Okay.
What?
Year over year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how, how's everything going with the schools? I know we've put a lot more attention into school walkthroughs and that sort of thing.
School checks, yeah, we've been doing, we've been doing at least one a day, one a day for each of the schools.
Right.
And that conjunction with the business checks, keeping us pretty busy.
Go ahead, Danielle.
I have a, so I have a question about the school checks. I did see the number there. I'm wondering, I know you said one a day, is, so is the, is the number there only related to, how many of our schools are in our, are in Schoolville Township? There's obviously Schoolville Elementary, but there's the middle. And Matavon, okay, so those 33 are related to those two schools?
Yeah, well, they're, they're, it's one building, but two schools.
Oh, oh, early learning center and then.
And Schoolville on top of that.
Okay, so, so it's 33, but that's split among those two buildings.
Well, not just, not just there, but also the Technical College High School would be also, we also do school checks there.
Okay, so if there's only 33 a month, it sounds like you're doing fewer than one a day because you have three different buildings that you're visiting, or the 33.
They may, they may be counting the, the one building as one school check, they may not be counting that as two.
And there was Thanksgiving this month. Thanksgiving break.
Okay, and then I just wonder, I know that this report is being put together, you know, for the education of us as the supervisors, is there any reason why we wouldn't, we would want the number of school checks to be, to be confidential? For example, as a, as part of your, um, no, it's, should we, should we not request that to be, you know, public information, but more keep that confidential in terms, does that provide any information out into the public sphere about how often you're checking the schools, and is that something that we might want to keep closer to the best?
I guess you could, it could go both ways. I mean, it's, we never, we didn't have, until the Chief Fry came in, we didn't have a mandate that the officers do the school checks. I think if it's public knowledge that we're doing it, that may be some sort of a deterrent.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so I, I guess you could look at it both ways, but the fact that we're there, the kids are seeing us, they're used to seeing us, I think that's a good thing.
You also don't list, we're not, we're not asking them to list the times that they're going to the schools.
No, the times is, depending on the workload of the day, the officer's, what they're doing. So it's, it could be morning, it could be afternoon, it's random.
Okay. All right, you made, you made a good point, thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
I will say, Danielle, there's, we've talked, there's a good bit more going on than just checks that we don't disclose to the public as far as preparation, things like that that are happening behind the scenes.
Understood, thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Okay, two-minute report, that was a little bit longer than a two-minute report, but that's okay. Two-minute report from our township engineer.
All right, I'll try to keep it to two minutes. Um, so Paul Lehman Drive construction has started. We were working with coordination with Dolee, making sure that the township residents that are most impacted were aware of this, as well as the emergency services and the Phoenixville School District for student and bus travel. We had a couple little hiccups with that, but we got that clarified and figured out. So Dolee has figured out how to move forward with that. Since that time, we've been going through, and we've been working through a handful of utility conflicts with the design. Some of the survey information, such as the water main and the gas main, weren't exactly where it was originally located, so we've been, you know, adjusting some of the design. We've been coordinating with Nick, making sure that any of the design changes aren't going to be negatively impacting future maintenance for the township and such like that. And, and finally, like I said, we're working with Dolee on like certain details and constructions. They have some certain questions, and we're going through some, you know, clarifications, et cetera, and we always solicit Nick's advice and preferences when we're going through this. So the, so the construction is going smoothly as of now, it just started, so they were, they're starting on the low end, and they're working themselves north, so they were working on the, the big culvert this, this past couple days.
No major rock issues yet?
No, there hasn't been any, that would be the first thing they'd complain about, they were smacking into rock, and we have not been, they have not told us about the big rock issue, so that's a good thing.
That's great. Are they still looking at completion before Christmas?
Um, I, of course they'll say yes, but I'm concerned that that's not going to.
Of course not.
Because first off, wait, the weather hasn't been that great. It's been warm, but it's been wet, so that, that causes a problem. And then if we hit a cold snout, that means the asphalt plants will be like, you know, we're going to take some time off. And a lot of asphalt plants typically take off the week of Christmas anyway, because a lack of anything going on and it's colder, they just send their, their people home. It's like a fifth week of vacation that they give as a benefit.
Okay. All right. Moving on, board discussion items, old business.
My understanding, do we want to table this until next month?
This is Nick's truck.
This is Nick's truck.
Oh, this is Nick's truck, never mind.
Consideration of approval to pay the purchase price in full for the road department's 2022 Ford F-350 in the amount of $45,266.79. This was previously approved to purchase as a three-year lease purchase agreement. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Right. Discussion, a new business, discussion on the 2023 meeting calendar. Discuss proposed dates of the Board of Supervisors' regular and workshop meetings and all commission meetings.
I can take this.
I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
We don't. Yeah, you don't need that yet.
We don't need that yet?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Cancel that out, yeah.
Yeah. So I just wanted to have a discussion on the meeting dates. We've talked about this on occasion before. Having our business meetings on the first Wednesday of the month causes many occasions where the meeting falls on the first of the month or the second of the month. That creates an issue for the financials, because Susan, our township accountant, has a really, she has to then rush to get everything prepared, because we don't receive bank statements until the month closes out. So we don't get them, and, you know, we don't always get them first thing in the morning on the first either, so it creates some issues. It results in a lot of rushing and headaches that would be, you know, it would be better to avoid that. And looking at the calendar for 2023, fi, in five of the 12 months, the meeting will fall on the first or second of the month, which gave her a little bit of a heart attack. So my recommendation, rather than just moving the dates in which it's going to be a problem, I think it's easier for continuity and for the public to have a sense of when our meetings are, to just move all of the dates and keep them the same day each month. So my recommendation, looking at the calendar for the board meetings as compared to all of our other committee and commission meetings, is that we consider moving the regular business meetings from the first Wednesday of each month to the second Wednesday of each month, and then the workshop meetings from the third Thursday to the fourth Thursday, just so that we don't have back-to-back meeting weeks. So that's my, that's my spiel.
That's fine with me. Danielle, do you have any comments? It sounds fine to me.
Okay, great.
So are we going to vote on this now so that you could post next year's calendar?
The only, the only meeting that we need to discuss, because we will advertise, we will advertise the full year meeting dates after Reorg, so you'll give us authorization to advertise the meeting dates, but I wanted to know the dates for the business meeting so that we can finalize all of the other meeting dates, so we can do the calendar all at once. So I don't need you to vote on that, but we'll go ahead, based on your consensus to that we'll go ahead and prepare the schedule for next year, but what we should discuss is the Reorg meeting. Traditionally, the board has their business meeting on the same night as Reorg, but that's going to be the same issue as we just discussed. So I would say if we're going to have the meetings be on the second Wednesday of the month, that for January, we just advertise the business meeting and hold it on the second Wednesday in January, and just do Reorg. Handle all of the Reorg business at Reorg, and then hold the business meeting. And then the board can decide if you want to have a workshop meeting or not in January, because we'll have had two.
So give me those dates again and plan. You're talking about Reorg on?
So Reorg would be January 3rd.
That's correct. So that's Tuesday. It's Tuesday. This year. Because Monday is the holiday.
All right, I'll be on Zoom for that one.
Okay. All right.
And Reorg really should only be 15 minutes?
Yeah, it should be quick.
And I end up talking most of it, or whoever. Whoever you end up with as, as chair will end up doing most of the talking, so that'll be on the 3rd. And then our business meeting will be on the 11th.
Correct.
And then our.
The workshop.
Workshop meeting will be on the 26th.
If you choose to have it.
If, if that's what we're.
It would be advertised that way, as needed.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
Sounds fine to me.
All right.
Perfect, so then I do not need a motion for the 2023 business meeting dates, but I do need a motion for. Number two, I need a motion to advertise Reorg, and then I will need a motion, actually, we can handle, we can advertise the business meeting after Reorg, so I just need a motion for number two.
Okay, so we don't need number one.
Correct.
Okay, let's forget about that one. All right. Consideration of advertisement of the 2023 Board of Supervisors' reorganizational meeting for January 3rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any more comments or questions? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Consideration of advertisement of the 2023 Elected Board of Auditors' reorganizational meeting for January 4th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Consideration of approval of McMahon and Associates' proposal in the amount of $6,000 for the preparation of bid specifications for the Greenlight Go Grant Signal Detector Upgrade Project. Boy, that's a mouthful. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. I'm going to table number five, because Lori did not receive everything she needed for today, for us to be able to consider it today. So we're going to move on to number six. Is this the one that we wanted to table until next month? Okay.
Uh, we should discuss though, because it, there may be a, the, if we table it until next month, it won't go in the 2022 budget.
It would be in the.
So that was the proposal and it is not budgeted for in the 2023.
Can we approve contention?
Well, can't, if we have the money, can't we just use it next month?
It would be, um, I mean, it would be an unbudgeted expense, but yes, technically.
It would be in next year's budget, it wouldn't be in this year's budget.
Correct. We, so we budgeted in the 2023 budget for, um, I believe we put in for one vehicle, we generally budget for one vehicle each year. This one is replacing an existing vehicle, so it would be separate from that. Um, the other, the only other issue to consider with this is that this vehicle is currently available. Um, if we table it until next month, it may not be. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. That's what was relayed to me by the chief and the lieutenant.
What do you mean it's, it's available? Like, we could go drive it off the lot right now?
Yes.
And can I ask, because we're supposed to have a vehicle replacement process and we had committed to the EAC that they would get to weigh in on vehicle replacements. In fact, that was a resolution, um, that was passed and we had agreed to it. So is there a reason why this is not being brought to our attention? You know, like I first learned of this Friday, where it's on our meeting tonight. I mean, is there a reason why we're not following the vehicle replacement process?
Well, I think we are. I was not notified that we had identified the EAC.
I'm gonna go to the.
Um, I didn't know that that was part of the process.
Yeah.
And I don't think we've done it before, as to my knowledge anyhow.
So I think it's relatively new and we haven't really tested it a lot, but I think the intent is to kind of pass these things through the EAC so that they have an option to determine whether or not there's any alternative source, alternative fuel source vehicles available. And if there's not, then we go forward with the purchase as planned and.
I, I understand, in this case.
But also to, I think, test whether we need to move to a less energy-efficient vehicle. I mean, I think we, part of our energy process and what we're trying to do in terms of the EAC and what they've been working on is trying to make us as a township more energy-efficient. So I think that they would want to, and they've asked to weigh in, um, on, you know, whether we need to move to a pickup truck as opposed to a sedan.
And it's only gonna be one, it's not like we're gonna have a fleet of pickup trucks. Um, and the other issue with, the other option for one of, if they, I'm sure they would look at would be the, Ford has an F-150 that's all electric, but there's forty thousand orders that haven't been filled yet for it, the chances of us getting one are almost nothing. Uh, this vehicle does have fuel-saving features, it does have, automatically turns motor off at stop, stop and start, so that there's fuel savings there. Uh, it's not a heavy duty pickup like the road department has, it's an F-150, uses the same motor that our current explorers and Ta- or Taurus is used, so it's not, it's not a vehicle that would consume a lot of gas.
Well, I mean, it's a pickup truck as opposed to a sedan, so I mean, our.
Right, but with there's.
We've owned a pickup truck ourselves personally.
Well, the reason for that is, um, storms and a lot of situations where we need to pick up barricades, take them out the streets, block things off, uh, pick up items from, you know, maybe burglaries or, you, you name it, there's a lot of answers and we can't physically get what we need to get into a car.
Well, let me just say, I drive a basic SUV and all the things that were listed in the memo, cages for animals, I could even fit a deer carcass in my SUV, like all the traffic signs. Uh, I mean, I could fit all that in an SUV, so I mean, I guess.
We can't fit them into our SUVs.
Really? What can't you fit in that?
Well, we have ca- we have barricades in our cars for prisoners so that you, there's not, it's not like your SUV where you can fold the seat down and slide things in. It, then there's, the back of it is where the radios and all the equipment is, it's immovable, you can't, you, you can't do that with it.
So you're saying you need this, I don't think prisoners was listed on the memo, or is that what you're saying? You need an SUV, you need a F-150 for a prisoner, seriously?
No, 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 what I'm saying is SUVs that we use.
Yeah.
Are not adaptable like a civilian SUV where you could fold a seat down and slide bigger items in. You can't do that with the police department SUVs.
Because they have prisoner cages.
Prisoner cages, uh, radio mounts in the back, um, racks for our, our equipment in the back, so that there's no pass-through, you can't slide barricades into one of our SUVs.
Is the, uh, the, the economy about the same as the SUV with that same?
Very, very similar, yeah.
The EAC isn't meeting this month either.
Yeah, they're at the end of January, so push off to February.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I have to say, I, I feel like we've talked to the EAC about this, we specifically committed to them about replacement vehicles, we, they would have an opportunity to weigh in on it. I feel like we need to respect our commissions and allow them to do that. If this is a one-off thing, but again, I'm just not sure why things are being put on our agenda on Friday for a decision on Wednesday and not going through our process. And maybe we didn't communicate that to you, but that's something the EAC has definitely communicated to our board. And, you know, these are volunteers who are putting in a lot of time trying to work on energy efficiency and I just think we need to respect them and give them a chance to weigh in on things like this.
I understand, but a lot of those vehicles are not police vehicles, they're, they're not police packages and that's what we need to buy. We can't buy a civilian Explorer and put it on patrol.
Well, they, they said that they, there are different types of energy-efficient vehicles you could buy, but again, that's something, we're just trying to give them a voice in this.
Okay.
Because we are as a township committed to energy efficiency and, you know, I think you've worked on this, I mean, our EAC, Danielle is on the, the commission, um, working with them, so I mean, it's just part of what they're working on and so we've kind of said to them we would let them weigh in on these decisions.
Yeah, and I think the feedback here is incorporate this into, uh, i- if we move forward with this tonight, then we would want to see the department just incorporate that, that feedback into the, the process of future vehicle purchases for all.
I have no objection to it.
For all the future vehicle purchases.
I've got an idea to run by, is it John Kennedy Ford that has it?
No, it's actually Whitmoor's, Whitmoor's up in Lebanon, it's like an hour, hour away.
Do you think that it would be an option to put some money down and say, hold it, we need to have a meeting and discuss it and then.
I can, I can, I can ask.
Contingent upon, you know, that meeting, we can go forward or get our money back?
I can, I can ask, I don't, I don't know. I would not know the answer to that question.
But it would still be the end of January and it would still be in next year's budget, not this year's budget.
That's right.
That's a carryover that we could, if we had to, make an adjustment for, it's a pain in the butt, but could it be done?
Um, yes.
And is that an option worth considering to say, hey, we want to get this one, we want to save it, uh, if it ends up going that way, but if not, if the research comes back and says, here's another option to consider, we can discuss it and say, yea or nay at that point, but then we give the, the EAC their chance to weigh in and.
Yeah, I, I understand getting their input, I, I, but I personally, and I'm pretty knowledgeable with what the vehicles that are out there now, I don't know of another vehicle, a, a pickup like this that you could, that's gonna be any more energy-efficient than what we're So you, folks let me know what you want me to do.
Okay, I would suggest we try to put some money down on it and ask them to hold it while we review and see if there's another option.
And if that's not an option?
Uh, if it's not an option, we've got some money down, so it's preserved, if they'll do that, I mean, there's a lot of ifs and here, but if the EAC comes up with something to discuss that everybody says this is better, we can cancel that and make a move in that direction.
I think they just want to be part of the process and we've agreed to that. I mean, I think if it can't be done, it can't be done.
Right.
But I just think that we need to respect our commissions and so if we can, let them be part of the process, which we have committed to.
If you give me a contact person, I'll be glad to talk to them.
Yeah, but if it can't be done, I mean, I'm not trying to hold up something we need, but again, at the same time, I thought we did have a clear process for replacement vehicles and including them, so I want to make sure we do put that back in place.
I think it would, it would be beneficial for us to, because I, I don't believe we have a formal process in place, um, so I think what would be highly beneficial is for us to establish that and work with the EAC and all of the township departments to figure out how, how we move forward. I have spoken to the EAC about, you know, a long-term plan to, as we replace our fleet, to look for more energy-efficient and maybe even full-electric models. It is a little bit of an issue for us currently because, like the lieutenant said, the vehicles are just not available. Um, so that is absolutely something that we should develop for the future, I don't thi- right now, we don't have a formal policy in place for that.
Would, would you draft that or would, uh, you work with the chief to draft that? Um, chief and lieutenant to draft that next, for, for next year, so we have it in place for future purchases?
Yes, that.
Great.
Yeah.
And include Nick in that too.
Well, that's what, yes, because it will, it will apply township-wide, yeah. Right, absolutely.
They had passed a resolution, which I thought we had adopted, and I thought all it was gonna be was that if you needed a vehicle, you would say to, you know, Lori or whoever, we need a vehicle, we would then put it on their agenda.
You need the internal policy in place to do that.
Yeah, they would then review it, so I mean, it shouldn't be a big deal, it just.
Yeah.
No, it's just, it's new to us because we've never done it before.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So understanding the lay of, understanding the lay of land on the vehicles, I'm inclined to just consider it tonight.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna consider approving this, this one tonight, but I think going forward, um.
We just make sure we have the policy in place to.
Yeah.
To make sure this goes through the process and the EAC gets involved.
Okay.
Where are we at?
Did, who?
Uh, we didn't make a motion.
Tina? Did I make a motion?
No.
Was there a motion on this?
No.
Okay. Consideration of approval to purchase a 2022 Ford F-150 for the police department in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred dollars and upfitting costs in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred, eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents for a total cost of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll make the second.
And again, this is just this one-time, one-off, going forward, we'll follow this other process to see if we can get the EAC involved in finding other vehicles for us that are available. So this is just for the one-time thing that we have going on here. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I, I have a comment, Martha.
Go ahead.
Um, I think that also, um, I mean, I'm fully supportive of moving to alternative vehicle, um, you know, energy sourced vehicles, um, I think we need to also make sure we're thinking about that in context of making sure we have the infrastructure in place.
Yes.
That these are practical, right? And I, and we're gonna be talking a lot about capital, capital improvements next year and we just have to keep that in mind that, that we can't purchase a vehicle in a vacuum without DC fast charge, um, technology in place to, to make it a, a practical vehicle for, especially in emergency situations such as what lieutenant is discussing, uh, moving barricades during a flood, for exa- for example. Um, so we just need to make sure that that's at the forefront of our thinking when we're doing capital planning. And, and also I just wa- I wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate, I think that this, um, this is the first time that this has come up and, uh, it was an unintentional oversight to not run this through the EAC first and, um, you know, should I vote to approve, it would be with the understanding that this is, this is a one-off purchase and that we would like this to be vetted through the EAC going forward.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to allow public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, any public comment? Ahead, Rick.
Is it four votes or eight?
Yes.
That's chief.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I have to vote no anything because I'm the liaison to the EAC. I have to go back to them.
Moving on, number seven, consideration of approval for the Environmental Advisory Council to purchase trees and associated installation costs not to exceed seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Go for it. And are the, which ones are these four?
I have no idea.
Is this general tree installation gen- just anywhere township properties?
Correct.
That would be, that would be directed, but I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Primarily to Pickering Preserve to replace some of the trees that were taken out or?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, but I think they're looking at Valley Park.
Yeah, well, and I don't want to speak for them, but what they talked about was, I think there's an area out here where we talked about putting a tree for someone, and again, I don't want to talk about this, but, um, I think they think like more than one tree might be nice, especially because there's a lot of space, uh, but then if they can't use them there, and again, that's something in their planning, the planning stage, then they have a lot of, um, the preserve and.
Are you talking about the old township building?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I would talk to Nick about that because I know that we had a tree that was there and it died because it was too close to all the salt.
There's supposed to be some rainwater thing or?
Yeah, that's, that's up closer to this area.
I don't know where that is, but that's where they're thinking would be a good spot for some trees.
Okay, yeah.
But again, they want to make sure we have their permission from us to do that, but that's one of their thoughts, and then if not, they have a bunch of places they could use them in the preserve.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any more comments from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is their, that's their 2022 budget, so just to clarify, that is coming.
That's coming from their budget.
That will be this year, yes, that they were looking for ways to utilize the remainder of their budget.
Now, they do know that that has to be spent before.
Yes, correct, I spoke, yes, I've spoken with Michelle.
Okay. Okay, moving on, number eight, ratifying nomination of candidates for the 2023 Fire Chief at Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company as submitted by the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like this is something that's necessary.
Well, it's part of their bylaws.
I've read, I've read their bylaws, the bylaws indicate the fire board. I'm not sure what the fire board is because it's not defined in the bylaws.
I think your board is the fire board to direct it.
Okay.
So it just needs to be rewritten.
I've talked with Roy, we've worked together.
Okay, great, I, yeah.
Trump's the new president next year, we're gonna get a committee to rewrite it again.
It was, it was unclear in the bylaws when I was reading it.
Five years later, we go through this process.
Change all the words and, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, just a quick question, well, well, in the rewrite, are you planning to continue to include the board or would you like to remove this board from that nomination process?
I'm sure that'll be a discussion.
Okay, we'll discuss it later then, great.
Yeah, um, I'm sure Roy will have an input on that.
I was just curious if there was any direction on that, great. I'm, I'm good then, thanks.
Trying not to push anyone in any direction.
Yeah, no, understood, this, it was a weird, weird situation when we heard about it, so we were all kind of, kind of confused. It's all good. Thanks.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolutions and ordinances. Number one, approval of resolution number 2022-21, adopting the 2023 Schuylkill Township Budget. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second? I forgot what month it was. I'm like, wait a minute, do we do that now?
Yeah, I, I second.
Okay, got it, okay.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Woo-hoo, woo-hoo.
All right. Approval of resolution number 2022-22, the annual tax levy for 2023. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approval of resolution number 2022-23, establishing the 2023 holiday dates. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Did they change from last year?
No, no.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't, I didn't, didn't look closely at that one.
Nope, same as last year.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of resolution number 2022-24, implementing Act 57 of the 2022 Property Tax Penalty Waiver Provisions. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Do you want me to explain that at all?
I mean, I...
I know, I know we just voted on it, but it's something that was forced down our throat.
That's correct.
It was required by the state.
We have no choice but to adopt it. But if you'd like me to, for the benefit of the public, yeah. So, this came from the state, so there's no choice but for us to adopt it. We're mandated to do it by January. So, that's why we adopted it tonight. But the long and short of it is, this is seeking to address issues with new residents. And Tina, correct me if I get any of this wrong, and Bill, if I mess any of this up. But basically, it just allows for a mechanism for someone who is a new resident of the township who, for whatever reason, does not receive their tax bill. They would have, this establishes a mechanism for that person to file paperwork in order to seek a waiver of the penalty. That does not currently exist. So, this would, this would create that.
So, this is for, it's for new residents? It's not for current residents who just, oh, I forgot about my tax bill?
Correct. No, you have to, there's a whole list of qualifications that you have to meet in paperwork, that you have to submit proving that you moved in, that you moved into the, and it's not exclusive to us, but that you just moved into the municipality after such deadline. And you have to prove that, it puts the onus on the property owner to prove that they did not receive their tax bill and then just allows them to apply for, it doesn't guarantee that the penalty gets waived, but it puts a process in place that somebody can ask for the, for the penalty to be waived.
Okay.
Oh, there's a question from Suzanne.
Sure, Suzanne, come on up.
Yep.
Yes, you do. We have, unfortunately.
Every time.
We got to get you on camera and on the video. We need to hear, we need to hear your lovely voice.
I can't hear you, Suzanne, if you don't go to the mic.
Well, it's just a quick question because I was just wondering, is that for all the property taxes? Or is it like the school and the county and the township? Or is this like whose tax is waived?
I believe it's all, it's all, it's all.
It's all taxing districts, yeah.
Thank you.
Can you just name, name an address for Tina's benefit?
Suzanne Maraki, 160 Diamond Rock Road.
I know, we all know who you are, but you know, we have to have it for the record.
I just put it across my... Thank you.
And again, Suzanne, you know, just for, for the public, this is just for new residents? This is not for current existing residents?
Correct.
Okay.
So, don't throw out your tax bill if you already live here.
You'll still be liable for the tax bill if you throw it out.
Okay.
Where are we at, transfer funds?
Yep.
Number five, approval of resolution number 2022-25, the transfer of funds. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And Lori, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, so as I mentioned in my treasurer's report, we are anticipating ending this year with a budget surplus. So, this resolution will give me the authorization to transfer up to $500,000 into the Capital Roads Fund and up to $150,000 in the, into the municipal complex fund. And this is in preparation for future projects, additional road projects, Paul Lehman, that is still going on, and our future municipal complex work. And again, it's up to those amounts, so it will depend on where we end the year.
Okay. And, and will that be enough to satisfy Nick?
Yes.
His, his buffer? He, several years ago, I know he's not here at the moment, but several years ago, he had said that he likes to have a buffer of about a million. Will this be okay for him?
We accounted, he and I reviewed his budget during the budget process.
Okay.
Aside from this potential transfer, because at that point, I wasn't counting on this.
Okay. So, but he's, he's, he's okay with it?
He's comfortable, yeah.
Fine, that's, he's my, my biggest concern there. So, any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Moving on to subdivision and land development. As you all know, earlier this evening, we moved number one up to the beginning of the meeting. I have to say, bringing his pregnant wife here really got me and said, you know, we really need to move this up for her. Okay, so, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you're allowed to say that, I don't, no.
You've just given a roadmap for everyone to fast-track their...
Okay, now, now, everybody's going to come in and they're going to have, have baby bumps. Okay, I got it.
I'm coming through the door.
All right. Zoning, let's see, number two, zoning hearing board application 1422 and 1442 Tullamore Lane. Who would like to start this?
This is a old story of this property. There was a consolidation program that was approved a while ago. But the long and short of it is, the property owners installed a very large concrete wall in the rear of their property without a building permit. And there was some, let's say, imprecision in terms of prior plans, which did not show this proposal. The concerns are that it violates the zoning ordinance because such a wall needs to be five feet back from the property line in case it falls. So, we had some communication with the property owners, they got a lawyer, and the hearing is set for the 12th, I believe, right? So, the esteemed township engineer to my right is not available that night. So, what we're planning to do is, depending what you want to do. The first question is, do you want to be involved in this or let the zoning hearing board decide? It's same as in the last case. You have no obligation to do anything. But if you have an interest in it, you have the right to express the township's disapproval by sending me to oppose it or take any position that you like. Generally, townships don't go in and seek to support applications because that is seen to be, you know, imposing on the zoning hearing board's rights. So, the question really is, do you wish to oppose it or let the zoning hearing board decide it?
So, my question is, I understand that there's a long, lengthy history to this.
Well, yeah, it began...
Is the zoning hearing board aware of this lengthy history?
Well, they may not be.
And that would be why we maybe send Bill.
Right, and that's why I'm thinking we might send you so that they are aware of this history. And Kim's not even looking at me.
The problem is that, it's a practical problem, not of our making, but it would be extremely expensive to have them tear the wall down, file a building permit, which would allow the township to conduct inspections as it's being installed. We don't have that now. So, it's going to be, it's a problem.
Right, but the, the expenses aren't necessarily the township's problem.
No, it's their obligation, yeah.
It would be the property owner's obligation to knowingly file their permits, get approvals and for, it's outside of the bounds of reason to assume that you can just build a retaining wall of that size and that shape and that length without, without any approvals from the, from the municipality. So...
Did we determine how high, did we determine how high that is? Because I know that we've had, in our prior discussions, we, it was suggested that...
Sean, can you turn her volume up? I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, no one has gone out and actually looked at the height of it, but it does look like it varies. It's a retaining wall that drops in height along the way. So, the township requirement is any wall that's over three feet is supposed to have a fence protecting from someone from falling over. So, there does look like, from the street view, that the wall at certain lengths is over three feet. And, and it should be noted too, that the wall is located on the property line and the wall is retaining the earth on the subject properties. So, if the wall would happen to collapse, the wall is collapsing onto property, the property owners...
Adjacent.
Not, not, not the, yeah, thank you, adjacent property owners, not the, it wouldn't fall onto the property of the question.
Have we had complaints from the neighboring properties?
About this specifically or anything generally?
I believe there was, at one point, there was a phone call from one of the residents and said, hey, there's this wall in my backyard. But it was, the phone call was received by the township after the wall had been constructed for a long period of time. But the wall, the wall just, it was stalled. And on the most recent plan that they submitted regarding the lot line change, they showed the wall. And that's where our review letter said, if you're going to show this wall, you need to get a 15-foot easement from your neighbors so that in the event that there's maintenance required, et cetera, that there would be the ability for someone to go do this because there would be no way to even paint the facade of this wall without going onto neighbor's property.
And neighbors apparently refused the easement. So, that's some indication of where they are. And these are hard cases because you live next to people. You know, you don't want to start World War III with your neighbors. There were a number of discussions about resolving this and they went nowhere. So, you know...
Yeah.
I would go and give her a sending out.
Yeah.
Do we need a, do we need a formal vote to send...
Yeah, we should. You're spending money, take a vote.
I'll make the motion that we send Bill to represent the township in opposition to this zoning hearing board application at 1422 and 1442 Tullamore.
I'll second that.
Any more comments or questions? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. You know what? Before we move on, is he going to leave Paul? And do we have to vote for Paul Trump?
Was your motion, was your motion specifically for...
For Bill?
Bill?
Yes.
Or did you say the township to oppose?
Send Bill? Do we need to make a second?
I don't think he needs to make a motion to send.
Do I need to amend the motion? Okay.
Okay.
Do we need to amend?
Okay, no.
No, I think you're okay.
Okay, cool.
Township opposing.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, moving on to announcements. I have a few announcements here. On Friday, December 9th, that's this Friday, the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company will hold their annual tree lighting.
We don't know what time, what time is it?
Time... What time?
We'll make sure it's on the sign.
After dark.
Show up whenever you want, okay? From, from, you know, noon on, show up at the fire company for the tree lighting.
Have a drink. Eight o'clock.
Santa Claus is coming at eight o'clock? Okay, all right.
So, show up before that.
So, show up before then, all right.
When is the fire, when is the fire truck passing my house? Because I miss him every year. That's what I want to know.
Are you guys doing that this year? It'll just be random? Okay. So, you're not going to schedule it? So, so the people...
I haven't seen any schedule for different buildings.
No more business travels.
So, it's just random where, and wherever you feel like going in, in the township? Because my, people in my neighborhood are asking to.
Usually, if we get requests through a homeowners association, we try to accommodate that request, but we don't put out schedules.
Okay, okay, all right. Moving on here. The Schuylkill Township Administration Building will be closed on Friday, December 23rd and Monday, December 26th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. And Monday, January 2nd, 2023, in observance of New Year's Day. The Schuylkill Township Police Association coat drive will continue through January 31st, 2023. Kindly drop off your new or very gently used coats at the township building during normal business hours. Does the fire company have anything else? Any other sales going on? Okay, all right. Police Association, anything else going on?
We have to let the shop work out then, but that's...
That's, that's private. That's not really something for the public, okay. Does the board have any announcements they want to make? No? Oh, Rick?
Starts at seven.
Okay.
Real-time updates.
The annual tree lighting ceremony starts at seven with Santa there at eight. Okay. All right. We have public comment. Do we have any comments from the public? If you could state your name and address, just for the record. We, I know, we know who you are.
I know who you are too. Jean Syrup, Spruce Grove Lane, Phoenixville. This is just a courtesy update. We put together a website, there's a team of us that put together a website on protecting Schuylkill Township. And right now, we're looking at two major issues, Owawa and Polig Sedgeley Farms. So, we're going to be providing you an update with that survey that we've conducted. After the first of the year, we'll be giving it to Lori and she's going to be distributing it to you.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.